Good evening. The time is 6:00 and we're ready for the Board of Aldermen, City of Raytown, October 4th work session at this time. We've got two agenda items. First is regarding the fiscal year budget. And we're at this time turn to our city administrator Mahesh Sharma and our finance director Jeremy Wilmot to discuss the 2011-2012 fiscal year budget. Gentlemen?
Good evening Mayor Bauer and Board of Aldermen. First I would like to thank you for sitting through the budget hearing process that went very well last week. Just for the public, my name is Mahesh Sharma. I'm the city administrator with City of Raytown. Tonight we are just during this study session giving a brief presentation regarding the budget of 2011 and 12. As usual, this budget presentation will be in two parts. I will be just talking about general information and general introduction of the city's budget, while our finance director Jeremy Wilmot will give you the detail, fund by fund, dollar by dollar, everything in detail. Presentation of tonight's will be posted on the city's website. And while Jeremy and I was working through this presentation, and I just got it through the printer, we haven't made a copy for you. But nothing that we are going to present it tonight, and I will mention if there are few things that is not in the budget book, but everything we are going to tell you tonight is already in the budget book, so no surprise. Budget, we have adopted a very basic definition. It is a plan for the implementation of program or activity within a specified period of time. In our case, it's a fiscal year from November 1st to October 31st, which include an estimate of both revenue and expenditure. When I go out and in general people ask me how big your city is, how big your budget, how many people you have, I just give them very brief and what I would ask you to do is take those three things into consideration. 2012 city's budget have approximately 215 full-time employees, approximately $30 million budget, and approximately 30,000 of population. That's very easy to remember and that's what I tell people. This year's budget include 214.81 full-time employee compared to last year where we had 211.71. And if you look at 2010-2011 budget, we had 214.36 full-time equivalent employee. While you will notice that the full-time FTE decreased from 2010 to 2011, but we gained back almost to the similar level due to the public safety sales tax. And after this budget, they would have all the employee that are budgeted through the public safety sales tax funds. Our budget is balanced in theory. What it means then all operating expenses is or shall not exceed the operating revenue. And we were able to balance the budget in last three, four years technically due to the one-time settlement dollars that we received through telecom. But that does not mean we haven't dip into those fund balance. However, the amount of money that we have taken from fund balance from last three consecutive years have been shrinking. What it means, we are getting to the point where our revenue is equaling to the expenditures. This year, in fact, the process we went through, that gap was narrowed down to the point where our revenue was in excess to the expenditure that we proposed. I generally tell that budget process in fact never stops. I think it won't be any surprise for most of us to know that while we are delivering the budget for 2011-2012, we are already working on 2012 and 2013 budget years. So we work on the budget before even we adopt this year's budget. So there are certain things we do before the fiscal year, which is what I'm telling you, we are doing it for 2012 and 13, is we look at our strategic plan, we do our revenue estimate, we plan our expenditure, we plan our capital improvement program, we prepare our budget, we review it almost on a regular basis. During the fiscal year, we implement the budget once you approved it. And that require budget administration, accounting, revenue administration, purchasing, cash management, and risk management. After the fiscal year, we go through the audit and review, financial reports are generated, audit reports are provided, and the budget is being reviewed to see what needs to be changed for the future years. For last few years, I am using the line, revenue is what drives the budget. And the budget document is give you a control on spending. Rest of the documents are policy-driven, such as purchasing policy or compensation plans. But the basic again is revenue drives the budget. Our budget preparation, even though I mentioned in past slide, the process is start with revenue forecast, then I ask each department head and their respective staff to submit budget request. We review then the requests submitted by the departments. Then we conduct administrative hearing. After back and forth few times, once we are at the point where we feel like we did everything we could to balance the budget without really impacting the core services, then we present the budget during the board work session and we just call it budget hearing. As I mentioned, it happened last week. And from that hearing, if we have to make any adjustment to the budget, we do that. And the final budget is submitted for your approval. And once it get approved, we publish the budget and adopt it. During the summer this year, we asked the governing body to have a budget goal session. And during that goal-setting session, five priorities were identified. Economic development, partnership and community involvement, infrastructure, financial, and public safety. Once those goals were identified, the departmental submission tried to connect their department goal and how they tied with the board's goal. This year's budget you will find is gearing towards getting general fund to 100% into a program budget. And in the future year, the other funds will also be a program-based budgeting. When we started the budget process, the strategy was given to the department head to operate conservatively and keep spending to an absolute minimum. Avoid incremental request. And as we mentioned during the budget hearing, we are almost from hybrid approach where line item budget versus program budget. An incremental request means if the revenue is 2% or 3% higher, then all the line items goes 2% or 3% higher. But truly, it's not a reflection of what it does or what kind of program it benefits. So we are moving away from a line item incremental request or decremental request to a priority-based program budgeting. We also kept in mind that one-time resources should only be allocated to support one-time expenditures. Because once those resources are exercised, then there is no money available for the future years. We wanted to make sure that we are monitoring the sound fiscal planning and policies. We have a dedicated fund balance for every fund and we are very mindful that those fund balance are kept in the minimum requirement as well as little bit more. With this budget, we also have a 10-year capital project management plan. And of course, budget is a dynamic process and every year we review those and those capital projects modified accordingly. Doing more with less is a new normal. As we know, the revenue picture is not getting really very enthusiastic. Therefore, what we are trying to do is do the stuff that is more strategically. We have done those buying opportunities last years, two years ago, and yet again this year, that when time is right, buy our supplies, nail down those contract that gives us the best prices. Rather than waiting, for example, for salt during the winter month when the demand is higher, we fill our salt storage capacity when the weather is still wonderful and the prices are pretty reasonable. Obviously, we do have the challenges, economic recession. Who knows when the economy is going to turn around? We have continually experiencing increasing utility fees. We cannot predict the weather, whether the demand for salt or snow removal will be higher or lower. Increase in prices for liability insurance, healthcare insurance, and also the utility charges for the street lights and uncertainty in the fuel cost. This year's budget, as I generally mentioned during my presentation, is a bare-bone maintenance level budget. Now I'll take few moments just to mention few accomplishment. In the past, I used to have a laundry list of everything that we accomplished. I can curtail it a little bit. If you need that list, I can provide you in the future, but for the sake of time and this presentation, I'm just going to mention few things. This year, one of the major accomplishment we have is to receive an state authorization on removing the requirement of certified letter for the delinquent sewer payment. And that was the effort that legislative committee took. And our approach was we take one item at a time. And that is strategy did work, at least in last three years. This year, as I mentioned, we got the approval from removal of the certified letter requirement. Last year, we got authorization for a tourism tax if ever we have a hotel motel in the town. And two years ago, we got state authorization on public safety sales tax. So our effort, rather than having a laundry list and taking it to Jefferson City, is to focus on one or few items. And that strategy seems to be working very well. Pretty soon in the future, we would have a meeting with our legislative committee and we'll decide if there is an item or two that we want to focus on and take it to the Jefferson City. Also this year, with your approval, we got codification underway. The City of Raytown Code of Ordinance have not been codified since original date of adoption, which wasn't a surprise. It was adopted on October 7th, 1969. Our goal would be to update it, look at every five year and update it every 10 years. So we will not let that happen, like another 40 years goes by. We are doing a minor code updates every year, but the overhaul of the entire code book has never been done. So we appreciate your support getting that project underway. We are also looking what we can do to optimize our effort to do, to save the energy. And we are implementing some of the program that was mentioned by Public Works Director during Public Works Department presentation regarding the streetlight optimization, installation of energy-efficient streetlights, and a smart use of thermostat control to utilize the temperature control when the building is occupied or unoccupied. I really don't have much to tell about economic development in the sense, all we can see it physically what's happening in Raytown. And our economic development administrators gives a quarterly report on that. And there are a lot of accomplishments that happened through his effort and your support. One thing I always challenge my department head about finding every dollars available and leveraging city's fund. And one of the great accomplishment as a team we have done in last five years is to bring a lot of money from other agencies. Since 2006, we have in our city done 19.5 million dollar works, worth of works towards projects. Out of those 19.5 million dollars, 4.8 million dollars received through grants, 9.6 million through low-interest loan, 8.25 million towards regional projects, and 5.1 million dollar Raytown's contribution. Altothers because of our effort, one way or the others, this region was benefited approximately 28 million dollar worth of dollars of projects within the vicinity of Raytown. Also, one of the thing that we accomplish with your support, and as I mentioned about 9.6 million dollars worth of a low-interest loan plus the city's dollars, is reducing the sewer flow significantly. And that helps us to lower the cost, or at least not to increase the cost for the sewer treatment. This slide, I got it from what the national economics, economic forecast for 2012 is. And these are the forecast when folks from various part of the country get together and predict. So I'm just going to mention it. It's pretty fluid in my opinion. It can change. But what they're predicting for 2012, economic growth of 3.25% with an inflation of 2%. Unemployment rate they're predicting is going to be 8.25% for 2012. Federal fund rates, 0.25%, which is almost nothing. And 10-year treasury, some predict it's going to be 2.75%, some says it's going to be 3.5. Who knows what it's going to be? So this is what they're saying. But all that information has an impact on Raytown. Next slide, I'm going to show some of the demographic fact. And keep in mind that 2011 data is out, but these numbers are from 2000 to 2010. But based on the number we have up to date, I will try to provide that information. City of Raytown population decreased from 30,388 to 29,526. Although it is a decrease, however, what they were predicting decrease would be, it was much less. Per capita personal income increased from 21,634 to 24,817. Medium age become younger from 39.8 to 36.1. High school graduate percentage rate decreased from 87.3% to 86.8, which is a slight decrease. However, the bachelor degree or higher education percentage increased from 19.5 to 26.9, which in mathematical term is a significant increase. School enrollment increased from 8,367 to 8,837. The biggest increase was unemployment rate from 1.6 in 2000 to 9.1 in 2010. Other interesting demographic in Raytown, the population percentage of white is 67.8% and that is based on 2010 census information. African-American population is 25.1%, Hispanic 5.1% and others 2%. I think if you really like to see the significance of the data, I just said, you probably have to go to 2000 number. And that tells you that the population of white is declining, while the population of African-American Hispanic is on the rise. As I was mentioning, our budget is approximately $30 million. Is 8.9% lower than the 2010-2011 adopted budget. My recommendation is always try to equip and retain top-notch workforce. If you recall, this year, employee paid 50% of the health increase cost. And therefore, I'm recommending that city should give a lump sum, one-time payment for employee, 1% or 500, whichever is more. Overall, this reduction in the budget, we have done without any layoffs. We have included $30,000 to tear down condemned properties. And there are other programs that when Jeremy is going to give you presentation, he will go in detail about it. Stormwater mitigation program, if you recall, that program is in existence for last five, six years. And when I mentioned, we have successfully reduce the flow that goes in a sewer, sanitary sewers to the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. We have seen a significant reduction in the flow. And part of it has to do with our continuation of the stormwater mitigation program. This year's budget does include a $50,000 towards that continued effort. While we understand the inflation and the need in taking care of top-notch workforce, I am also mindful about our residents who are going through the same economic tough time. With this year's budget, I'm recommending no increase for the sewer rate for our residents. Also, you will find there is no change in the city's portion of the property tax. If the residents are going to feel a change or increase or decrease in property tax, it would be due to the other jurisdictions like schools, fire, and other entities. The budget work we have done was truly a team effort. Preparation of budget is a complex process and we have gone through back and forth. But the success of our getting into the, where the consensus of the budget was, was truly due to the team effort. And the three word, three Cs, I mentioned here in my presentation is a cooperation, coordination, and collaboration are essential tool when we got together during our process. Yes, we do have a dream and it will take a team to make a dream work. And with that, I have a question mark, which means either I can be open up for the question if you have at this time, or we can continue with Jeremy Wilmot's presentation and then allow you a time to ask the question later on. Whatever works, we are open for that.
Hey, are there questions of Mahesh at this time before we proceed? Okay, let's take it over to Jeremy then.
And while Jeremy is loading his presentation, during this study session, we have two items mentioned tonight. But I do believe, as we are discussing the $30 million budget, I do want to make sure we get enough time to have a question. So the GIS presentation, and I'm recommending that we postpone it until the next council meeting. So there will be no presentation tonight. So we'll take our time and just focus on the fiscal year 2011-2012 budget. If that's okay with Mayor and the board.
Heads nodding, heads nodding. You have, you have the consensus.
Thank you. Good evening. Before I get started with the general comments of the budget presentation, again, I just want to point members of the board and the audience at home to the document that was put together. It's separated into categories, hoping that those categories help to ease the reader in finding the information they're searching for. The first section of the budget is the executive summary section. Before I get started, I should mention that all of this is on our website for anybody who would so choose. What we've done is we've put each section of the budget on the website, so it's not as searchable as it'll be in its final formation, but there's enough information in here, we felt was important that anybody who wanted to read it or look at it needed to. So on the, on the finance page of the website, just go to fiscal reports, I believe is what it's called, and then annual budgets, and then you'll see the recommended budget as the number one top link of that page. The first section of the budget is the executive summary, which houses the city administrator's message to the Board of Aldermen and the Mayor. The next page is the mission statement and board goals, which Mahesh had touched on in his presentation. The next page is just a brief tour of the budget for anybody who's new to this process or isn't really quite sure where to look. This is a good resource to kind of point you into the direction that you may need to go to find the information you'd like. The next two pages are a part of my presentation, what the property tax dollar is by taxing entity and the sales tax dollar by taxing entity. Then there's a frequently asked questions section, again, to help the reader try to find information. And finally, any additional information or quick reference guide, just to provide phone numbers and resources to departments and organizations within the City of Raytown. The next section is called the city profile. It starts with the listing of elected officials. The next is a listing of appointed officials, followed by a page of history of the City of Raytown that's also on our website. The population profile that Mahesh mentioned in his presentation is there as well as the demographic information that he mentioned. And then finally, just an organizational structure, so people can see who's in charge of what, who reports to whom, and then an organizational chart to see the formal structure of the city. The third section is the budget structure and policy section. It covers all the funds that are budgeted, the funds that are not budgeted. There's a listing in there of what fund or what departments are housed in which fund. So if you're looking for a particular department, you can see all the funds that the department is funded from. And then the final four section, or the final four documents are all the policies and procedures surrounding finance, primarily with the major fiscal policies of the city, the significant accounting principles of the city, the budget cycle, and the budget process. And for the sake of time, we won't go through that, but if you have any questions about that, certainly let me know and I'll answer those as best I can. The next section is the budget summary, which we'll be going through tonight. The budget by fund, which we'll be going through tonight. And then the final four sections are just a sort of taking a microscope to the budget and looking more in-depth. The first one being debt and capital, which we'll go over tonight. Personnel and compensation, which for the sake of time, we won't go over tonight unless you have any specific questions, but Mahesh addressed in his presentation. The multi-year budget forecast we'll go over tonight. The revenue summary will hit the highlights of the revenue summary. And then the final section is just the departmental budget, which since all of the departmental budget hearings have already occurred, we won't go in any detail on the department level, but just an overview of all the special revenue funds, what programs and projects we're planning to request funding for this year. So we'll go ahead and get started. The first slide will compare last year, the current budget we're in fiscal year 2010 and 11, with the budget that is being recommended tonight of fiscal year 2011-12. As you can see, the general fund is being reduced by 1.4 million. The bulk of this are one-time projects that you all allowed last year. The biggest one being the, excuse me, the loan to the Ditzler CID for the new Aldi and restaurants to be named hopefully soon. The park fund is being reduced, I'll say technically, but not literally, and I'll explain that a little further when getting to the park fund. But what's been the practice of the city, probably for decades, has been to appropriate whatever fund balance is. But as you know, we've been trying to gear this city toward best practices and doing things the, the way we see professional government being ran. And in no other instance of our budget or any other budget that I've come across, have we ever taken fund balance and then just called that an appropriation? And so for the first time this year- And so, for the first time this year, we're recommending that the Park Fund only appropriate the monies that they need to operate the programs. And just like the General Fund, in the event that special projects come up along the way, they come back to you for that special appropriation as we would any other fund. So that's the major deviation you see from last year to this year. The Transportation Sales Tax is going up just slightly. The Capital Sales Tax is going down just slightly. Public Safety Sales Tax is going up about $200,000 to add a few more officers to the program. Risk Management is staying essentially flat. And the Tax Incentive Finance is going up. And we'll get to that a little bit later, but that's to address the rising debt service. The CIP Fund is going down. The only, well, we'll get to that in a minute, but the only program that we have in the CIP Fund this year is one federal grant. And Sanitary Sewers going up about $194,000, again, to address debt service. And then there's a new fund we'll talk about at the end of the night, Vehicle Maintenance, that's essentially being ripped out of the General Fund and a few other funds. We'll start with where the money's coming from. We're taking a little different look at this than we have in years past, just to give a little bit more information and knowledge to the viewers at home and the Board of Aldermen. As you can see, our largest revenue category is sales tax. Currently, there is $7.6 million in sales taxes in this budget. And if you want to follow along in your document, I'll be reading from the Budget Summary, starting on page D4. Property taxes have increased about 4.53% from the previous fiscal year. This is kind of a misnomer, because as Mahesh mentioned in his presentation, and as we've certified to the state, our levy is staying the same. So the actual revenues from assessments is staying the same, and you'll see that in the budget document. What has been going up over the last few years, and what we're recognizing in this year's budget, is delinquent property taxes. They've been on the rise over the last few years, and that's essentially where the growth is in this year's budget, under property taxes, not the assessed value taxes, but the people who don't pay their bill on time, the delinquency that's assessed by the county, the penalties and the interest. That's what the increase in the budget is. Sales tax is a 0.98% increase. I've been about as optimistic as I can be, unfortunately, in the current economy. What we've seen, what you all have seen over the last three-quarter reports that we've given, is essentially a flat sales tax. But we do know, now that we have an IHOP that's operating that we didn't have before, we have an Aldi that's operating that we didn't have before, and we're hopeful that there'll be a few more businesses, Sutherland's being another one, that will be open in this upcoming fiscal year, that has given us reason to raise our sales tax, albeit slightly, to address those issues. The miscellaneous tax, which is listed on here as a cigarette tax, is actually going down. This has been declining every year. As near as we can tell, this again is a retail-based tax that's ran through the state. So it just shows that we have a decline in sales tax, or cigarettes being sold within the City of Raytown. Franchise fees are increasing 3.37%. The two largest increases to the franchise fee are the telecom, we're seeing an influx in cellphone companies, which is increasing the tax, and the, it used to be Aquila, but KC Power and Light has already announced that they had a rate increase. And so we factored those two in to our franchise tax. Permitting and Licensing is a 6.9% increase, and this is based upon the pricing schedule that you all put into place for the last fiscal year and the increase in activity that we've seen on our development side. Intergovernmental is a 6.52% increase. This is basically due to recognizing some consistent grants that the Police Department have received over the last three or four years, and appropriating them in the budget rather than waiting and doing it at a later time. Fees and Charges are going down, 17.51%. As I mentioned during the budget hearing for EMS, this is primarily due to those fees being reduced by the state and by the federal government through Medicare and Medicaid The Fines and Forfeitures is a 5.9% increase. We've seen throughout this entire fiscal year that the court has exceeded their revenue for what I believe to be the first time since 2000. And then finally, Investment Miscellaneous is about a 4% increase. And the reason for this is the increase in interest that we've earned by being members of MOSIP over the last year. Here's a quick slide that's in the budget book, showing where property taxes go. 68% of all property tax dollars go to the Raytown School District. The county, I think, gets about 6% or 7% for their various levies. The City of Raytown, the General Fund gets 4%, and the Park Fund gets 2%. The Fire District gets 11%. So you can see that we are a rather small piece of the property tax pie. On the sales tax side, the state gets 37% for their general operations, an additional 12% for Prop C or education expenses, additional 2% for Missouri Conservation Projects, additional 1% for Soil Conservation. Those are all state sales taxes. The county gets 6% for general operations, 5% for the voter-approved bond issue to redo Kaufman and Arrowhead, 3% for the county combat drug tax. The city gets 12% for the General Fund, 6% for transportation and public safety, 5% for capital sales tax, the park sales tax is 2%, and the Fire District gets 3%. This next slide is showing how the budget is allocated, and we've done a little different look here than we've done in the past. In the, in the past, we've looked at wages and benefits together. We've looked at supplies, and then contractual services all lumped into one number, finally with capital. And what I did this year was take a little bit more time to break them out into a few more categories, to show you just exactly where the budget is being spent. As you can see, benefits are roughly 37% of wages. The supply figure isn't broken out. The bulk of that is fuel, but with it being such a small percentage, I didn't really spend a lot of time on that. Maintenance and Repairs for all departments is 1.8 million, or 6% of the budget. Utilities are 567,000, or 1.9% of the budget. Insurance, this covers our property insurance, our risk insurance, and our workers' comp insurance for employees, is 851,000, or 2.8% of the budget. And then the other contractual services, which, you know, span a wide array, the bulk of that being the, as Mahesh mentioned, the payments to Little Blue Valley and Kansas City for treatment of sewer services, is 14.6% of the budget. The debt service for the bond issues, the bonds on 350 Highway and all the sewer bonds that we have, is a little over $4 million, or 13% of the budget. And finally, the capital, which is primarily the residual bonds for both sewer and the 350 Highway project, are $5.3 million of the budget, or 17.8%. But as you can see, the total budget has decreased from the prior year by 8.29%. Another categorical way to look at the budget is by activity type. And so, as you can see, Public Works is where the bulk of the budget is going. And the reason for this is that Public Works, I guess, could also be categorized as infrastructure. This is where all the street money is in the Transportation Sales Tax Fund. This is where the sewer expenses are housed, the debt service for the sewer, and the bonds for the sewer. Those two alone make up half that figure. Public Safety, 9.3 million, is again primarily police and EMS, with the court figured in as well. Community Development, the 4.3 million is primarily the debt service for 350 Highway. General Government covers everybody else, basically the Board of Aldermen, the Administration Department, Finance, and then Parks and Recreation, of course, is the final percentage. This is a slide of how the employees are broken out. The Police Department have 41% of all the employees within the city. As you can see, Public Works is 13%, Parks has 11%. All the various departments are shown on this slide. This slide speaks a little bit to the five-year forecasting that we've done the last three years. We start with a few years back, where we are, where we plan to be next year, and then five years into the future. As you can see, in 2007, expenses exceeded revenue. In 2008, due to those telecom payments that we all know about, revenues exceeded expenses. However, in 2009, the revenues went down, but expenses stayed the same, which caused this budget problem that you all have been working with us on over the last few years. As you can see, in 2010, we made great strides to bridge that budget gap. In 2011, we did bridge that gap. And in 2012, we're showing a slight increase of revenue over expenses for the first time, I believe, since 2003. Where we have expenses pegged for 2013 right now, and of course, this is using a crystal ball, we are going to have to make a few more budget cuts to get the budget to come within revenue, unless we do see some revenue increases that we're currently not anticipating. However, in 2014, we see the revenue starting to rise due to what we're hoping will be new businesses on 350 Highway and Project Area 2 and 3 of the TIF. 2015, again, we're seeing a little bit of an increase. And then 2016 is where I believe we'll start to see a structural balance going forward of revenue going up, with expenses moderately increasing along with them. Of course, there's a couple huge caveats to this. One we'll get to in a minute with the debt on 350 Highway. You know, if things start going worse in that project, obviously, this whole slide changes drastically. But at the current time, we're projecting that the expenses will not be exceeded by the revenues of the TIF Fund, so the General Fund will not have to make appropriations to cover the debt, and that's what this slide illustrates. Speaking specifically to the General Fund, we have estimated fund balance of 5.9 million. Just one second. This is found on page E2. We have projected revenues of $12,032,000. We have projected expenses, this is operating expenses and one-time expenses, of $12,46,000 for an ending fund balance projection of 5.9 million. We have the 17% reserve as required by resolution at just over $2 million. Our other reserves equal 2.5 million, with a projected undesignated fund balance of 1.4 million available for other projects. Again, the departments have given their hearings. If you have any questions, we'll take those, but this is just a comparison side-by-side of the expense. You can see the Mayor and Board, those salaries are set at the time of, before election, and they do not change. So the only change that you would see in this budget would be based on workers' comp. We don't believe there'll be an increase in our workers' comp premium next year, so we've left that budget flat. The Administration budget has been reduced by a little over $10,000. The Police budget has increased by a little over $68,000. The Finance budget has decreased a little over $3,000. As you can see, Municipal Court went up, Public Works, CMS, and Community Development all went up. And then that, the bottom line, the citywide budget, is where the 1.4 million was a one-time expenditure last year. So with that being reduced, the actual budget reduction is 9.4% over the prior year. In the citywide allocation, as Mahesh mentioned, we have set aside 1% of all employees, non-elected official employees, or $500 for those employees that 1% would be less than 500. We've bumped that to 500 as the base. And the total for that, because there's no pension element, is about $75,000. We've set aside $30,000 to condemn property again. And the final thing, there's a memo in your budget, but we're setting aside $10,000 to help fund the Rock Island Corridor Coalition. And our $10,000 is the city's allocation of the 17-mile corridor as they continue their planning and their research work for trail and transit uses. The Park budget, and this changes slightly based on their budget presentation, but the estimated fund balance is 1.2 million. Their projected revenues are 1.22 million. Their expenses currently are 1.22 million. However, in their budget hearing, they had asked for an additional, I believe it was $29,000. So their expenses will exceed revenue just slightly, but they have an undesignated fund balance, so that's, that will fall within the parameters of the budget. And as I mentioned before, we've set aside from fund balance what their plan was for equipment and vehicle replacement, rather than appropriating it, as we believe that falls in lines with the best practices that cities are trying to adhere to. The Transportation Sales Tax has an estimated fund balance of a little over $75,000. And the way this fund is going to work, excuse me, going forward, is we'll maintain our 5% cash reserve, but anything above that will be thrown into the pot, no pun intended, to repave roads. So, this budget, you'll probably see kind of go up and down over the years, and it's literally just going to be based on whatever underspending was in the prior year is going to get re-appropriated, so that we can do that much more for roads. The projected revenues are $1,025,000. The expenses are a little over that, and it's the difference between the $75,000 and the $51,000. We have $250 set aside for banking fees. Last year, it was 300. Through the newly renegotiated contract with UMB, this is what we anticipate our savings being on all of the different bank accounts that we have. Again, the Public Works budget is going up about $28,000, and that's an increase that's gone strictly to street overlay. Those other line items are the exact same as they were last year. And the only real change is that the KC Metroplex used to be housed in the Finance Department, but other than getting the bill and paying it, we really don't have any management or oversight of that, so we've moved that to citywide to better reflect the fact that it's not actually a finance function. So the, the, the city set aside $75,000 to run the Metroplex last year. That's all we've set aside this year. When the KC ATA comes with the bus contract, at that point, we'll have to decide, you know, if the costs go up, and I'm sure they will, are we going to reduce the hours again, are we going to take money from a different section of the budget? But that'll be determined in November and December, when the KCATA brings the next contract forward. Capital Sales Tax is holding a balance of a little over $539,000. We have revenues projected at $879,000 and expenses projected at $914,000, leaving a balance of $504,000. As you can see, $43,000 is for the cash flow reserve, and the bulk of that balance is going to replace the 911 console and radio system per the new federal regulations. As you'll see in the next slide, I believe, yes, $135,000 of this current year appropriation that we're requesting is to begin that radio upgrade, but the bulk of that money will be spent over the next two fiscal years after this one. The General Administrative Budget is staying the same, $60,000, to replace outdated computers, servers, laptops, or any other computer equipment for all of City Hall outside of the Police Department. As you can see, the Police Department has their own appropriation of $71,000 for the exact same thing. Their Police Car Replacement Program is at $215,000 this year, and again, as I mentioned, that's $135,000 for the radio upgrades. Again, $250 is the banking fee for this fund. And then Public Works has $123,000 to replace outdated equipment, and $50,000 is our annual salt barn payment. And $130,000 is set aside for various improvements to City Hall and public work facilities in the next fiscal year. Those are all outlined in the 10-year capital plan that's in your budget. It can, it begins on page E14 and goes through E17, if anyone has any questions on that. Finally, on that plan, you'll see that EMS has planned to replace an ambulance this year at $129,000. The Public Safety Sales Tax has a fund balance currently of $640,000. This money is basically due to revenues coming in before expenses started. As you know, it's great when you hire police officers, but there's a tremendous amount of startup time before they ever actually get out on the street through the academy and through all the different processes that the police go through in hiring people. So there was a little bit of a lag time between the hiring of officers and So there was a little bit of a lag time between the hiring of officers and the beginning of the sales tax. That money is also going to be used to replace the outdated 911 radio console. The budget we have is 141,000 for three detention off, three detention workers, 825,000 for six officers, the traffic unit and a crime analyst, and $50,000 for a dispatcher. Fortunately, I've got a typo in here, the 69,000 is for EMS for a paramedic. The loss control fund is the risk management fund for the city. We have $340,000 as a balance. The revenues are projected at 62,000. This is our best estimate as to what we'll receive as a loss control credit from NPR Insurance Risk Pool and any deductible payments or interest reimbursements we'll get for accidents that occur in the next fiscal year, and our current expenses are projected at $57,000 for the same. The tax increment finance fund, as I mentioned earlier, we're not anticipating any transfer from the general fund, so that's good news. As you'll recall from last year's budget presentation, we did think that, starting this year, we would have to have what I was calling a cash transfer, not an actual budget transfer, but just a timing difference because of when the property tax payment is paid versus when the debt service is due. But at this point, we believe we have sufficient cash reserves in the TIF fund to make the December payment, and we'll have sufficient cash in the fund in June to make the June payment as well. The projected payment in lieu of taxes pilot, this is the property tax portion of TIF, is at 420,000. The projected economic activity taxes or the sales tax increment that's attributable to the TIF is a little over 1.6 million. Again, that includes the Jackson County, the fire district, the city, and then the city has also contributed the bottom half of their sales taxes, which is 717,000, for a total revenue projection of 2.745 million. The debt service next year will be 2.733 million, so we believe we'll have a fund balance at the end of the year of a little over $12,000. This slide has been updated from last year, basically jumping forward a year, again, showing last year's payment, just so that you can see the increase. It's, it's been a $2 million payment for the first four years, beginning in December of 2011, the first principal payment on those bonds are due, and that's going to drive the payment from $2 million a year to 2.7 million this year, 2.8 million next year, 2.86 million the year after that, 2.9 the year after that, just under 2 point, or just under 3 million the year after that. It'll stay around 3 million for about 10 years. For sake of time, I just netted it from June of 2017 until it expires in December of 2031. But as you can see, we borrowed 39.9 million. The expected interest, unless we pay it off early, will be 34.5 million, for a total of 74.6 million dollars. The CIP fund has a fund balance of just over 209,000. At this time, we're only projecting the revenue for the federal grant, as I mentioned, and expenses and debt service for the 63rd Street Bridge, leaving a fund balance of 186,000. Again, finance has a $250 charge for banking fees. Public works has 800,000 for the, to study the redesigning 350 Highway and Raytown Road interchange, and then the $88,000 is the annual debt service to the county for the 63rd Street Bridge. Just two more funds here. The sanitary sewer fund has a current fund balance, or is projecting a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year of just over 2 million. Our revenues are projected at 8.2 million. This is without a rate increase to the ratepayers. The projected expenses are 8.7 million, leaving a projected fund balance of 1.5 million. Again, we're starting to eat away at that debt service reserve. The 45,000 is what we've set aside for the liability insurance premium. The finance budget has gone up just slightly, about $15,000. This is primarily due to DNR increasing their fees for being a member of the SRF program, but also it's a recognition of our bad debts increasing. Our postage actually went down, as Mahesh mentioned in his presentation, by $30,000 due to no longer sending out certified letters for delinquent shut-offs. The public works budget went up just a hair under $30,000. This primarily had to do with utilities, as Director Noel mentioned in his presentation, and citywide went up about 149,000, and this again was the debt service for the 2006 and 2007 SRF bonds. The final fund to talk about tonight is the vehicle maintenance fund, and this is a new fund for this year. One of the things that's been kind of sticking to me since I've been here is the way that we've budgeted for vehicle maintenance. It's not the best way to do it, and so this year, we decided to bite the bullet and just change it. Basically, what we've done in years past is we've had each department budget what they're going to spend for repairs, oil changes, fuel, whatever, in their, in their department as we should, but then we had what we called a negative expenditure in the public works department that kind of offset those expenses, if you will. So in other words, public works paid for it, they then charged it back to a department. So what we really did was we didn't give a fair representation of what it really cost to maintain the fleet of the city. So we've alleviated that by creating a new fund. The revenues of the funds are simply going to be transfers from whatever fund the services were provided for, and then the expenses, this is the full cost of the fleet. We'll be able to track this better years going, years forward to know, you know, just how much does it cost to maintain our fleet? Is the fleet expanding? Is our CIP actually helping us to reduce fleet cost over time? So it is new, it's a little different, but I think we'll see value in this over the next few years in being able to better track our vehicle maintenance cost. That is all of the slides I had. I believe we have four or five minutes if there are any questions.
Questions of Jeremy, Mr. Hertz.
Thank you.
Mayor, what I would suggest, as we are only a few minutes into it, maybe either it can be under city administrative communication or immediately after the, or immediately before the legislative session, we can insert a study session. That would be an amendment to the agenda that could be done on the floor, and I don't want to rush it through for a few minutes, but go in depth, so that's, that makes sense.
Let's see. I know Mr. Hamilton's.
We're not in session.
Well, what I'm saying is when you come back into the regular session.
We come back in, we'll amend the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Good call. So that concludes the study session. At this time, we're going to take a quick, give us a five-minute break, hopefully.